Welcome. Good to see everybody again. And as I always say before we start, if you'd like to turn on your camera, more than welcome to see your smiling faces as we appreciate that. My name is Joe Curtis. I'm the Senior Vice President here at Ascendus Travel. And welcome to our Client Town Hall meeting. So with me today, I have some of our Norman folks and some new folks that have joined our team since you've last seen us. So I have Brent Blake, our President. I have Terry Barton is going to be giving our operations update, and she's our Vice President of Corporate Travel. I have Drew Everhart, who's our Hotel Specialist and Advisor. Ken Augustine, our Vice President of Travel Technology. I have Peggy Magnor, who is our Client Configuration Consultant, and will be covering a little bit about the new Concur user interface and answering any other questions that are out there. Also have Corey Ring on here, who is our Director of Program Management. And then last but not least, Katie Lyles, our Director of Optimization. Katie will be running the meeting. She'll also be taking any of the questions that you have throughout the process. So please submit your questions into the chat box and we'll take care of them. And we'll address them at the end. And if anyone has any additional ones at the end, we can, we'll certainly cover those. So we have lots to talk about today that we're going to go over and cover. So with that, I'll quickly turn it over to Mr. Blake.
Yes, thank you, Joe. Welcome, everybody. Just wanted to say thank you for joining us today. We appreciate our relationship with you all in the business. We have a busy agenda, as Joe mentioned, so I just want to say one thing, and that is we are sending out surveys to our travelers. And we appreciate the feedback that we're getting both from travelers and travel arrangers. And so look for those surveys that are coming out after you use one of our agents on a phone call. So just wanted to mention that and thank you for the feedback and look for that. So I'm going to quickly turn it over to Terry Barton.
Thanks, Brent. Good morning, everyone. I'm just going to touch on a few things operationally as we head into the fall. So I think all of you know from wildfires and hurricanes these past few months, we have seen our share of flight disrupting events. And it's not even winter yet. So I just wanted to kind of cover what we're doing, both from our corporate standpoint and then our after hour service. So as we head into the fall, which we always seem to have higher travel volumes, I just wanted to highlight that our corporate agents, the past months of August and September, our average speed to answer your phone calls is less than two minutes. That's across your entire month. So when I looked just prior to our call today, we were at about six seconds to answer. So again, average speed to answer less than two minutes for the whole month. That's doing really good. I know that we have some days that are busier with high call volumes, and that's really when these disrupting events are coming into place. So I just want to keep in mind or have you keep your, keep this in mind for your travelers that anybody who's calling, they still always have the option to hold for the next available agent, leave a call back while remaining in queue, leave a voicemail and/or reach out to the team via email. So you have many different contact points to get to us during the day. We're also going to be adding some cool customized call music, hold music that's going to be coming in in the next few weeks. So that's just going to have a little bit different flair to the hold, hold music. We've been hearing some comments from people about that. So that's coming. And it was created just for Ascendus. So we're excited for that. Outside of our normal business hours, when you are given the option to transfer to our after hour service, I just want you to know that they are a third party vendor that we partner with to provide coverage during the emergency situations. While they are one of the top leading services, and this is across all TMCs, it's not just Ascendus, and they're not Ascendus employees. They too have struggled with coverage during these large scale weather events that we've seen, like I'd say from June on, we've had a lot of hurricanes and where East Coast is getting hit today again too. So I just want you to know that we're in contact with them all the time. I talk to them all the time, trying to see what's happening with their coverage. So they are continually adding, they're continually adding agents to their team. They just had three large classes of agents go through, so they will be on the phones and be able to take calls. That I just want to kind of cover too, that these agents that you're working with at our after hour service, they are highly skilled, but they're not our agents. So they have to know every single GDS across all of, all of the systems. Then they have to work with all the different TMCs, and then they have to know who our customers are. So they do have a tough job and unfortunately, seems like we're always reaching out to them during those stressful and frustrating events, trying to get put on flights when there's weather delays and stuff like that. So I have a couple of tips to pass along to your travelers if they are using our after hour service for emergencies. One is if you're on hold, stay on hold. Don't hang up and call back and hang up and call back. I see daily reports where people are doing that. All that does is remove yourself from your place in queue. So stay on the call, even if it's an extended whole time, stay on, don't hang up and call back. Utilize your callback feature, keep your place in queue, and you don't have to remain on, on hold. They'll call you back when your space reaches the front of the line. Only call during emergency service or emergencies, especially if it's one of the high call volume days. Utilize your airline app or your online booking tool if you're just checking flight status. There are other options out there instead of calling and holding with the after hour service in, in some of those circumstances. So just wanted to cover that. And then lastly, one of the big changes that was just announced this week is Delta Sky Miles. So beginning January 1st, 2024, Delta Sky Mile, so that's what your individual travelers are enrolled in, is changing your program a little bit. So it's going to make it easier to earn status. What they're doing is they're changing from a combination program, which was you used, they used to track Delta Medallion Qualifying Miles, MQMs, and a combination of Medallion Qualification Segments, MQSs. They're making this really easy for us. They're changing it to Medallion Qualification Dollars, MQDs. That's the only thing that they're going to be tracking in 2024 for your 2025 status. Super easy to earn points. It's any of the Delta flights or any of the partner airlines, one MQD equals $1 spent. So it's a very easy tracking system. It excludes taxes, so it's, it's your base fare, and it does exclude basic economy and similar fares like that. So those fares don't earn the qualification points. All of your travelers who are a Sky Mile member have received all of this and via email. So they, they should be familiar with it, but we just wanted to let you know that the program was changing a little bit. That's all that I have. I'm going to turn this over to Drew. If you guys have any questions, please, please put it in the chat. We can answer them all at the end, or just you can reach out to me directly. And again, I just want to kind of follow up with Brent and thank you for your partnership. Drew?
Thank you, Terry, and hello. Good morning, everyone. It's great to be here with, with you all. My name is Drew Everhart. I am the Hotel Sourcing Specialist and Advisor here at Ascendus. So here to help with all of your hotel needs, hotel inquiries, that's what I'm here for, to help you for. So today, we are coming up on a very busy season in the hotel world, the RFP season. So that is something that I would like to touch on, as well as market conditions as we lead into our negotiations for 2024. When we look back to 2019, to where we are today, I think it's fair to say that things have been a bit sporadic in, in the market. But the good news is going into the end of '23, as well as into 2024, we are seeing some leveling off overall in the market. Now, with that being said, inflation is a thing. It's affecting, you know, really all industries and the hotel industry is no exception. So we do still anticipate rate increases going into 2024. When we look at those percentages of increases compared to the past couple of years, like I said, we do see that leveling off, especially in North America, which is great news. So we're seeing a smaller percentage of increase year over year. Typically, right now, we're looking at anywhere around just under 5% or so in North America. So go into these negotiations, again, leveling off, but we do still expect those increases. Along with those increases, we are looking at some stricter requirements when it comes to our negotiations, and I will elaborate on that here on the next slide. But one important market condition that, that I think is noteworthy to touch on is the increase in leisure and vacation travel or, or travelers. So this market segment has really increased over the past several months and really the past two years or so since COVID. I think everyone kind of had some cabin fever. So venturing back out has been quite appealing to everyone. With that in mind, though, hotels are able to leverage a higher ADR, Average Daily Rate, from these types of travelers. So this just speaks to the importance of being very strategic as we go into RFP season. Next slide, please. Okay. So like I had mentioned, RFP season, this stands for Request for Proposal. So this is the time of year of these next couple of months that we'll be working hand in hand with hotels on your behalf to develop negotiated rates and develop a hotel program that's really going to fit your specific needs going into the new year. And the, going into 2024, we really want to focus on consolidating programs and driving business to preferred hotel partners. As I had mentioned, requirements for RFP acceptance have increased a bit. Typically, in the past, we've looked at around 100 room nights. We are seeing that increase. Some, some markets up to around 200 room nights to be eligible. So we really want to make sure when we approach a hotel that we're able to approach them as them being a preferred partner. We don't want to saturate a market with, you know, 10 or 12, 15 preferred hotels. We'd really like to keep that down to a specific, you know, two or three. Make sure that you do have options in, in the event of high occupancy night in a market. But like I said, generally speaking, consolidating a program and focusing on building those relationships with those properties pushing room nights there. And the main focus for RFP is looking at your particular company's room night production and which cities, which markets, you do have those room nights, those 200 plus room nights. That's where we're going to focus that all of our efforts. Now, this brings me to another topic that I know we've all discussed before. And that is having a strong travel policy within your organization to really push booking compliance rather than having rogue travelers. And the reason I say this is it does give us the reporting capabilities that we need to really go into these negotiations and make sure that we are able to portray the production that we anticipate for your company in that market. And we do that by pulling past data so we can forecast the future. So booking compliance is extremely, extremely important, something to always keep in mind, but especially going into 2024. One more thing, as far as the types of rates that we are looking at in the past, really no change here. We've always had a diversified approach when it comes to a dynamic rate or a percentage off. Static rates, just flat rates, seeing a lot of seasonal rates throughout the year that will vary based on seasons, based on hotel occupancy that is specific to each market. So and well, and another thing to touch on is our tiered rates, which is going to be something that you'll see more in extended stay type of negotiation and need. So taking a diverse approach, really focusing on identifying those preferred hotels and focusing negotiations there. So like I said, so this, we're really gearing up for this right now. So I will certainly be in touch with, with all of you to really discuss the program. Now, the good thing about being a partner with Ascendus is we are able to leverage our relationship with BCD, which we are wholly owned by. We, the good thing about, let's say that maybe your travelers are going to a market where you do not have a negotiated rate. Well, that is fine because we still have our partnership with BCD for the BCD rate program. Now, this encompasses well over 50,000 hotels across 180 different countries. So these discounts can range anywhere from 5% up to even 20% off of the best available rate at that hotel. So if, even if you don't have the room night production to warrant a locally negotiated rate, you still have the ability to get those discounts, and that's an exclusive benefit of, of being a partner here with Ascendus. And all of these, all of the BCD rates, excuse me, all of the BCD rates should already be loaded into your booking tool. So they're right there at your fingertips. Next slide. Okay. One more service that I definitely want to touch on while I, while we have everyone here is our group sourcing. Anytime that maybe you have a meeting coming up, or you're just needing a block of rooms at a particular hotel, we are able to go out and negotiate pricing based on those numbers for a group block or a meeting. So typically speaking, if you have a need for 10 or more rooms at a property, and this could be in a market that you have a negotiated rate, or a market that you do not have a negotiated rate, we have tools where we can source out properties that meet your needs and negotiate group discounts. Excuse me. So we can, anytime that, that you have a need for this particular type of service, you are more than welcome to reach out to me. You can reach out to our hotel desk. That email is right here for you, hoteldesk@ascendus.com. And I can provide you with a group sourcing inquiry form that would give us all of the information we need on our end to provide to reach out to the hotels, send out RFPs, and then we would create a summary, kind of like what you see here on the screen, for you to really make an informed decision of which property is going to work best for you, and then we can help facilitate that contracting. So another great service, a great value add that we are able to provide here at Ascendus. And like I said, always feel free to reach out to me. And in the meantime, of course, like I said, I will be reaching out to you to go through your RFP season and make sure that we develop a hotel program for 2024 that works best for your needs. And with that, I am going to pass it along to Ken, who's going to talk about NDC.
Hey, thanks a lot, Drew. Really appreciate it. So for today, I wanted to do a quick recap of NDC and break down what's progressed and where challenges still remain, and maybe give some timelines along those too. So in some cases, these challenges are pretty temporary, but others are going to probably be here for a while. And hopefully, we can differentiate some of those. So apologies if some of you have heard a little bit of this before, but just to remember that what Ascendus, what NDC really is, is a data standard. So airlines want to move to this standard to give them the ability to market directly to your travelers with personalized offers based on any number of factors. It could include frequent flyer number or other things. And they can use this to differentiate themselves from other airlines. The older legacy standard is called EDAFACT. That's where airlines were required to use the same format as other airlines for selling to travelers. And that's something they're really hoping to be able to move away from. So American and United have both, of course, come out with NDC. And they both announced that they would be removing some of their content from the older legacy EDAFACT data standard. In April, American said 40% of their data would be leaving, and they were kind of a bit vague on what exactly made up that 40%. In the last few weeks, United said that they would specifically be removing basic economy. And their position is that basic economy is designed for ancillaries to be added on to that very basic fare. And those ancillaries are usually not very easily added on at EDAFACT. So for a lot of our clients and just in general, this, this does make some sense from a, from a positioning standpoint. So even though American launched this through Sabre back in April, there's still a lot of providers in the entire ecosystem or distribution chain that are trying to develop what they need in order to support the NDC data standard. And they want to be able to, to support that in a way that recognizes and supports corporate travel requirements. So although we don't recommend it, we do have some ability to book NDC content with agents today through our global distribution system Sabre. However, serviceability still remains a really large concern for NDC bookings from an agency perspective. For one example, online booking tools, we, we can book them through that provided that we organize a Travel Fusion connection. Travel Fusion is a third party aggregator. Normally, our online booking tool would also connect into Sabre, but that's not available yet, and we'll talk about those challenges in a couple of slides. So next slide, please, Ken. So some of the concerns that we reported in past sessions are really airline driven. They may be a choice by that airline, or they may just be growing pains as airlines work to implement the NDC process. In the case of American, they've really been very public about their change in strategy and about moving away from the corporate travel market. So with that, they're not allowing tools like they have in the past to get the lowest fare, like using Ascendus Fair Watch to rebook the same flight at a lower price. And they're not allowing name changes to take advantage of existing credits. So there's also challenges using the credits that you have, maybe you have today that are on the EDAFACT sort of data platform. Although American has kind of announced that they've got a partner that they think can make this work, it's still very new, and it hasn't been widely integrated yet across different providers. So I don't believe that these things will really change in the short term. United's strategy is simply just to bring pricing, to be able to change pricing faster for yield management that they have been not as able to do as quickly in EDAFACT in the past. And they still have some growing pains here. So we think that this is something that will improve in the short term around their ability to support exchanges that are NDC like for like, or the ability to exchange some of the credits that you maybe have in the existing EDAFACT data standard. Next slide, please, Katie. So there has been some things progressing. It hasn't all been negative. Sabre has really been working with us and with other agencies like us to improve what they can do serviceability wise. Agents can now book multi-passengers and multi-city travel, and there's some support for key profile fields like traveler numbers. And I know that sounds really rudimentary and like an essential part of booking, which for us, for years, it has been. And yet it still wasn't there at launch for some of those things. So in general, those things are improving. The user experience for an agent to be able to go through that booking has been improving. And we're getting more familiar with the process of, of going through a booking flow for this, this type of ticketing. We have a better idea also because of that, how to train our agents when we make those moves for, for different clients to be able to opt into NDC. That workflow is really different, and it's different than what agency, what industry agents have worked on for 30 plus years. So it's definitely taken some time for us to adjust. And as we've recorded in the past, that's just part of the growing pain process. So early on, there was also some technological challenges with tickets moving to financial back office systems. That has now changed because some of those systems have put out releases that accept those ticketing standards. So that's, we've been able to cross that off. And we've worked with our other third parties that allows to ensure that we can track unused tickets that are NDC specific. On the remaining challenges that we have that are listed here are with regard to the way that, that shopping happens in NDC. It's designed to start with price, not schedule. So that's something we can overcome, but it is a change for corporate travelers who are maybe used to knowing a very specific flight and very specific schedule. And seat selection didn't get released as an option with, with seat maps and things like that either. So we don't have a timeframe on a lot of those things, but we expect it to be coming reasonably quickly. Next slide, please, Katie. So we talked about Travel Fusion and that being at least one of the primary reasons that serviceability is a challenge for the corporate booking tool today. And here's some of the reasons why. So when we do a connection through Travel Fusion, every airline that's purchased through that is instant purchase. So that means there's no ability for pre-trip approval. There's no ability to avoid tickets for refund. There's no ability to apply unused tickets. And the user experience in this environment becomes a really big challenge. So today, we would maybe turn this on for a subset of airlines that were ready for NDC, maybe just one or two. And that makes the user experience confusing for just those two airlines and different from all the other airlines that they work with. What we found in testing is that travelers are asked multiple times if they're really sure that they want to book this instant ticket, instant purchase ticket. And sometimes it's possible if they miss a step, they could get a credit card charge with a purchase, but not be given their confirmation number. So you know, going this route would definitely require a lot of user training to make sure that if we booked, if we went through NDC right now, that there was no challenges with those credit card charges later. And it's, that along with self servicing are the primary reasons we can't really recommend it. There's no real ability for Travel Fusion today to make changes within the online booking tool. There's no ability really to cancel. So anything that would have that normal service would require a phone call to the airline, whether it was the traveler or the agent. Next slide, please, Katie. So the answer for us really is to have those online booking tools connecting to Sabre rather than Travel Fusion. And this is something that all the online booking tools are really working on. So that would mean that shopping and booking and changes are closer to what they are accustomed to in the online booking tool today. So it'd make it easier for your users and would definitely make it easier for our agents because of the integration to Sabre that they could see and service all of those online purchases within our point of sale as well. That's really a huge support. So when those integrations happen, it'll be much closer to a time to seriously look at NDC for our travel programs. All of the relevant dates are of course listed here with Concur. They have a number of releases coming up in Q4, and we're going to talk about those, you know, some of those in a second. So I think there's a very real possibility that this goes to the end of the quarter or maybe spills into the first quarter. And I expect demons, you know, to be probably closer to March in, in Q1, where they could also potentially drag into the early second quarter as well for their integration. So that really will give us full ability for our agents to be able to service those online bookings. But it does still leave some questions that we'll have to really address when that time comes and we start to really think about a full NDC integration. So a sample of some of those are, how are we going to know, how, how will users know for sure what's included in the bundle and the personalized offer? Will it be marked clearly enough? Is there training that will need to take place with some of that? It's, it could cause some short term confusion until that becomes something that they're more accustomed to. Clients might not have full choice for what gets turned on with NDC and what does not. So for the first time that you want to turn on NDC, you might be able, you might not be able to say, I want American NDC, but not United NDC. It may be all or nothing from an online booking tool perspective. From a policy perspective, we don't know yet what it's going to look like if we can restrict something that is part of a bundle package that's offered to your traveler like early boarding or anything like that, or whether that's an ability to do that yet. So there's some questions there. And finally, I think although we see price differences today occasionally, we know that long term, it's, it's not always going to be that way. Airlines are really moving this technology to maximize their profit and not necessarily to give you a better deal. So that leaves us, you know, waiting with some questions about how that's going to work once we all move there. So that's the current update, and I think I saw a chat come through with Katie to remind you to ask any questions through chat. I'm happy to take them. But in the meantime, I am going to turn it over to Peggy Magnor to talk about some changes that are coming up with Concur. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Good morning, everyone. We wanted to share some Concur details that are in the works. First, a new theme called Fiori Theme. Users will see a refreshed look and feel, and that's effective October 2nd. The Fiori Theme is a visual theme family from SAP, and Concur is adopting this theme for all Concur products on mobile and the web. All SAP Concur travelers, travel customers will default to the Morning Horizon theme, and this will be auto on. Concur plans to sunset the Gateway theme, which you currently see, and that's to be sunsetted in early 2024. So currently, customers have an option to use Gateway and Fiori Quartz Themes. With this change, the Fiori Quartz theme will be retiring, and customers will automatically default to SAP Fiori Horizon theme. So navigation to Concur product and administration page So navigation to Concur product and administration pages will be consolidated under Home menu as compared to the Gateway theme, where navigation was through Product Tabs and Administration menu. Kind of see, I'm sorry, Katie, we want to switch. There we go. You can kind of see a, a visual of, of the clean look that that will have. The overall look of SAP Concur will be updated with, which includes new colors, fonts, and design. Switch slides. We're going to talk about the T2, the Evolution of Travel. And SAP Concur will be releasing a new sleek and modern platform in the fourth quarter. A few highlights of the new platform include better products, attributes, and amenity details, search box and new features. You've got greater product selection and comparison features, improved sort and sorting and filters. They also have richer detail and images, improved seat maps, greater desktop and mobile app parity. And then the modern greenhouse gas emissions and calculations and sustainable details that will all be some of the highlights and additions. So stay tuned for more information. We'll be sharing that information in the coming months. There is a sneak peek video of the new travel experience. It's attached to Cory's September 15 newsletter. It's also attached to this deck, and I think we'll be sharing that with you at the end of this. So look forward to those changes. We'll go back to Joe for any questions that might have come in.
Yeah, and I, I think part of that, I know everybody on the call here doesn't use Concur, but, you know, we've covered DEEM in the past and highlighted their changes, and many of you do use Concur, so we wanted to highlight their changes. So what I think is exciting is they're all making updates, they're getting better, they're getting the customer experience better, and so I think it's only going to be better for your travelers as we move forward. Katie, do we have any questions? Seems like a pretty quiet crowd so far.
Yeah, it is. So we don't have any that have come through the chat box, and so I guess we can just open it up to see if anybody has any they'd like to ask outside of the chat box. I think we're good, Joe.
Okay, well, I'll turn it over to Brent then.
All right, well, wow, we covered a lot of material. Maybe we're just overwhelmed, it's like a fire hose today, but we have so much going on. We want to continue to communicate as best that we can, all of the changes. We know it's confusing. I'm confused, we're all confused, and it seems like each day there's a, a new change coming from an airline, a hotel, an online booking tool. So I think our role as your trusted advisor is to just try and communicate as much as possible. Then obviously, if you have questions later on with any of your travelers or your executives, please reach out to your program manager, and we'll get them all addressed. So that's what we're here for. So having said that, if there's no further questions, I just want to close with saying thank you very much for your, our relationship. We, we appreciate all that you do for us. We certainly are striving to be the best TMC that we can. We've worked hard, and I do want to commend my team in front of everybody to say they've been working so hard to keep everybody updated and, and keep us going here. So we're going to close with that and just say thank you, and we'll see you next time.